Good afternoon. We do have a quorum present, so I will read the notice of a public meeting. Notice of a public meeting, the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code. The Texas Open Meetings Act notices hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a special meeting on Tuesday, August 27, 2019, at 5:00 PM in the Commission chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for the many blessings we have here in the City of Brownsville. And especially here, we thank you for our mayor and city commissioners, people that have given of themselves to serve this city. Lord, we ask you to lead and guide them, and help each of us to listen to each other intently. And when we do not agree, help us to love each other anyway, and come together in unity. Lord, we ask you to bless this meeting, every presenter, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) to the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and tested flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
At this time, we will have, we'll begin with a work session, the city's proposed fiscal year 2020 budget.
We have Mr. Benya with the Children's Museum. Last meeting as part of our workshop, we had added their presentation that they wanted to make to the commission on the roof needs. We'll go ahead and let them go first because we did ask that they be delayed one meeting last time.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Wanted to give you all my questions.
Thank you.
Good to see you too.
We were going to start off presenting today by having some words read by one of our founding board members, who is not here right now, she couldn't make it in time. But I'm going to go ahead and tell you a little bit about what she wanted to mention. She said, "Good evening, members of the City Commission of Brownsville." This is from dear Beth Pace, and she was born and raised here in Brownsville, and she was a founding member of the Children's Museum Board for many years, and also served as Board President. If she happens to walk in, please have her come up here, because it's better if they were her words. She says, "Along with countless other members of the community, we have devoted a great deal of time to the Children's Museum, and truly believe that it represents the best of Brownsville. In 1994, Dean Porter Park embarked on a $2 million renovation of Dean Porter Park. The project grew to close to $14 million. As funding for Phase 2 began, fundraising hit a crossroad lacking $4 million to complete the project. It was then that a group of Brownsville natives visited Roy Mitty himself, when he was still alive at that point, and he made a generous gift of $4 million to complete the renovation. Currently, the Mitty Foundation remains active in the Brownsville community with the Children's Museum, and they are investing in the cultural district. With Phase 2 of Dean Porter Park renovation having been funded, so began a grassroots effort to build a children's museum that formed originally around a kitchen table. The museum with hundreds of volunteers exemplifies the best of Brownsville. Committees were formed and funds were raised. Millions of dollars were raised from pennies at schools to million-dollar gifts by different organizations." And she would like to refresh everyone's memory of those great investments, which included the Earl C. Sam's Foundation, the Meadows Foundation, the Community Improvement Corporation, Kennedy Foundation, the Southwestern Bell Foundation, Union Pacific, the Sarafi Family Foundation, Valley Baptist Foundation, Dr. and Mrs. Romero Montalvo, Southwestern Bell, Valley Regional Medical, the Simmons Fausto Luituria family, the Connor and Hardy family, the De Chirina Foundation, the Karpell family, Amfield's Brownsville Foundation for Health and Education. With our fundraising success, we hired Peter Exley to design our exhibits. Peter was recently elected the National President of American Institutes of Architects. Our building opened to the public in 2005, and we have grown in scope and popularity. Prior to opening to the public, our building leaked, through the roofs and through the windows. Ladies and gentlemen, we have hauled buckets, mopped, shot backed for over 15 years. That means ourselves, the administrators, herself, the board members, and other people of the staff, of course, have pitched in. The roof has been patched and patched, and we just can no longer continue in these conditions. We're here today to address this very important need. Our building has been compromised, and it is a concern for the safety and well-being of our patrons, children, and our hard-working staff. For the past two years, we've worked with the city, architects, roofers, and we haven't made any progress yet. To be honest, we're really tired, and I speak that wholeheartedly. It's exhausting. We need a new roof. We've been excellent stewards of our building that is owned by the city, but we've clearly gone beyond our duty in upkeep of our city building. And so now I'm going to tell you a little bit about, or show you a little bit of the symptoms of these roof issues. Like I mentioned, the museum's been open since 2005. We have had over 750,000 visitors come through our doors, and the roofs have leaked since before we opened in 2005. Unbeknown to the original directors, administrators, the building was built and very many shortcuts were taken in the preparation of our building. That's been verified by city engineers, city contractors, contractor, third-party contractors that have come to see the building. Every single time someone comes in, especially new people, they always tell me, "This is very sad, that these materials were used, that these shortcuts were taken." And I don't think it's anybody's fault other than the original contractors, because they didn't know any better. They just assumed things were going great, and everything was on track. So, the building's only 14 years old, so that's a pretty short period of time to have these kind of problems. I'm not going to go through the evolution of the problem with dealing with the city and the contractors that have come. You can read through that if you'd like. Needless to say, we've gone through multiple contractors, multiple vendors that have come to see the building, that have told us the same thing, that it needs to be repaired. And I know that, in good faith, this will get repaired. I know you all are on our side, and I hope that the city can come to some solutions to make this happen. So, this image here shows just the daily bucket that needs to go out, every single time it rains. It doesn't matter if it's a sprinkle, or if it's a hurricane, we have to put out all the buckets, clean up all the messes, and put things away. This is-
Mr. Benya, who was the original contractor?
Territorial Construction.
And was there any kind of a bond required of him that you know of?
Not that I know of.
And was a claim made against him, or against his bond, or anything like that?
It's a city building, so we don't really know-
Did you all try to encourage the city to make a claim? I mean, you've come to them, but what I'd like to know is why didn't the city go against a contractor to find out if he had a bond? They should have had a bond. What is the guarantee on the roof? How many years is it?
I don't know, total ones, two.
I know that there was, I'm sorry, before you speak, I vaguely remember when I arrived eight years ago, there was a type of litigation that was happening. Was it on this building, or was it somewhere?
It was, I don't know the whole story, but-
There was some on the, I think, the bus-
There was a type of litigation that I remember we had that we settled somehow. Was this the building that that happened to?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Doro Garcia with the Engineering Department. On this particular project, the issues were with architectural design-related. The contractor did what was asked for in the specifications and plans. There was litigation, it was with the architect.
And what happened?
The outcome, I'd have to defer to legal to see what happened with that.
I want to say that we settled for an amount of money, or some type of forgiveness, and that we were going to get stuck with these issues.
But I don't remember if it was this particular building, or was it something-
It was the, yeah, it was the project itself, because this one was not the only building. We had issues as well with the Civic Pavilion.
If I remember correctly, it had something to do with the way that it was on the risaka, or there was a fear that because of the proximity to the risaka, something with the building shifting, no?
Yeah, no, no, I mean, the structural integrity of the building is not an issue here, it's more the roof-
The roof that had the issue-
So, what was the guarantee on the roof?
Typically, it's 20 years, but I don't, I know with the litigation, there might have been some changes, or I don't know what the agreements were, so we would have to check with legal.
Okay, so, Mr. Padilla, please, if you can inform us what settlement, if, or if it was a judgment, or whatever it was.
Yeah, and I would ask that that be investigated, because maybe there is something that we can go back and do, or recover our money, or maybe even have it redone, because it's completely unacceptable that the condition is what you're in, and especially that it's a children's museum, and to know it's leaking like that, and probably even causing mold and all kinds of other things in the building. When you have a leaky roof, it needs to be addressed immediately, because the entire structure of the home is affected. And to know this is happening infuriates me, and to know that you're struggling and having that, to deal with that every time it rains, it's not just like it's heavy rain, it is every rain. And that really infuriates me to know that we have our city buildings in this condition.
What was the cost for the repairs?
I don't, I mean, there's been periodic maintenance and repairs to the building. I'm not doing this directly.
No, I mean, what is it going to cost to repair it right now?
We have an item before you-
Yes.
It's here tonight?
That's item number seven on the agenda, for the design of the repairs for the roof. And the design estimate is of $61,875, and the construction cost estimate is $825,000 for the roof, and some additional repairs for the HVAC.
A million dollars, because it wasn't built right.
So, Noel, you know, this was all happening before, and it was coming to a tail end when I was first elected, and I never heard anything more. I don't remember it ever being brought to this commission for, any commission that I sat on, for any kind of ruling or judgment. It just kind of was out there, and it happened, and city management handled it. And then I never heard another thing about the roof leaking until the fall, when you copied me on an email about the roof. So, maybe what you can do is research, I think we need to fix the roof, obviously, but I also would think that the whole commission and the mayor would enjoy a history reminder of what happened from point A to point B.
Legally, what happened with the claim? There should have been a claim, there should have been a guarantee, and if they gave us away, gave away these rights to compensation, we need to know about it.
Yeah, we can do that. We'll work with legal to put the story back together.
You've said you already have multiple people coming out and giving you estimates, and surveying the damage and all this, so why can't you use what you already have to get where you need to be with this? In other words, you want to get another guy, or is it something different than what you've already done?
So, what we've gone through, the history that you're looking at on the timeline, has been different contractors that are working with Doro to create the plans to change out the roof. We've gone through two architect firms now. The first one quit on the city, and the second one is currently doing the work for that. They are presenting an item seven, and they have already brought in a preliminary contractor to actually sort of estimate the project cost. So that is in progress with Doro. That's been good, but we've been on hold now for a long time, and it's not moving anywhere. And we just keep getting the buckets, and we just keep, and that's the frustrating part.
I think I, we get that, and I looked at your thing, and it's quite obvious.
I would also ask that while we're making these repairs, we also have the rest of the building's integrity checked, to see if maybe we have mold issues, or if we have any other kind of damage that this roof has caused, so that it's all addressed in one, instead of just, you know, waiting another 10 years until everybody that goes in gets a cold, or some type of respiratory issue.
Yeah. If you see here, this one, you can't see it, but that's mold, growing on our walls, inside the museum. That's not to say that it's not growing in between the walls, through the roof, we have no idea. We share our building with the Costumes of the Americas, and they have had all of their costumes, they're trying to protect them, but they're literally throwing them away because they've gotten mold. And so mold is something that's happening. We know it's happening, because I've literally cleaned it off with Clorox wipes, myself.
So, Doro, is there someone in-house that does a mold inspection, or do we have to get an outside person?
Part of the design, when we begin construction, we need to obtain an asbestos report. In the asbestos report, we're including to check for mold.
Oh, good, okay.
What's the total square footage on the roof?
Man, I'm not, I'm not going to have that offhand. I want to say it's approximately about 12,000 to 13,000 square feet.
Okay. Do you think that's in line, that estimate's in line with the square footage?
It is.
It sounds expensive.
It is, because- There's something at Page 30 that might be addressing that, unless it's 3,300, unless that's a different part of it.
When this museum was built, Dor- Doro, sorry.
19,000?
When this building was built, it's my, I don't know if it's my-
31.
I just can't remember, because it was so long ago. Was it my imagination, was there another building that was built at the exact same time as this? Was it the Omni Pavilion?
The Civic Pavilion, and the expansion to the Camille Playhouse.
Was it done by the same contractor?
Yes, and same roofer.
And are the other buildings having the issues that this building is having?
We have similar issues on the windows. They've taken some recourse to seal the windows to prevent that from happening, and most of that was done in-house, so it eliminated the issue on the other buildings. I'm not aware of any leaks on the Camille Playhouse side.
They do have leaks? So, I would think that our lawyer needs to get involved at this point.
And the idea was to have had the budget presentation, because the budget workshop today includes a facilities improvement plan. And you'll see that the number of our maintenance needs throughout our facilities is getting close to $15 million. So, the idea was to talk about our plan toward addressing that. This is part of that. In fact, why we can move quicker on this portion of the improvements is because where my proposal is to repurpose some existing bond proceeds that were issued for the library expansion, it never took off. There were some changes in the scope, and other things that happened, and now even the library has some needs, the central library. So, my recommendation is that we use those funds to take care of what we have, and invest in the needs that we have. It would take repurposing existing COs. Another project that we have is our performance contract, and then using some additional COs, new COs, to fund the difference. So we do one comprehensive investment and recapitalize our facilities. So you'll see the range of needs that we have throughout our facility, so it's not isolated to the Children's Museum, it's pretty much a bit more widespread. But we have a proposal before you as part of the budget.
And I'm very glad that the city is doing that. It just bothers me that these buildings were built, and they're not sound, and it's costing us millions of dollars to repair, and figure out what's going to happen, and on top of that, having to shift our monies the way that we're doing, when they could be greatly spent elsewhere. I just really feel like the commission should look into the fact that these buildings were not, were not built right, and it's not fair to the taxpayers, who, one, had to spend the money to build them, but, two, have to spend the money that we're spending and shifting, and COs, and all of this, just to get them where they, just to be structurally sound, really.
So, Doro, assuming that the item passes, which I'm sure it will, when would the repair begin?
The design, the item before you for the design, design's estimated to be completed within 60 to 90 days. We can talk to the architect to expedite as much as possible. Once the design is complete, we will bring an item, you know, or advertise the item, and once we obtain proposals for construction, we would come before the commission for the approval of that item. So I would say anywhere between two to three months before we begin construction.
And I think that's been, our greatest concern is, we're still waiting, we're still waiting. The quicker we can get through these processes and get this thing resolved, the better. If a hurricane comes next week, we don't know if that's going to damage our exhibits, if it's going to ruin our building, we just don't know.
The city hired an architect about six months ago. About two months into the project, the architect resigned from the project, because he didn't have the resources to complete the project, so the city went out and hired Rudy for GMS Architects. That's a proposal before you right now, for consideration.
And so, my other question would be, if maybe because of the situation that we're having here, and the amount of repairs, that maybe the city could reach out to Camille Playhouse, and, well, the Pavilion as well, and see if they're having similar issues, and just maybe sit down, all of us in a room with our lawyer, and see what options are on the table to repair these buildings.
And do you have a plan for evacuation in case of a disaster?
You don't necessarily have an evacuation plan, but I do know that we would do everything we could to protect anyone that was in our building if something drastic were to happen. My assumption right now is that it's, at least, what I believe, and I'm not a roofer, but that it would hold, we would continue to do our bucket situation, and keep moving along. But it is damaging our exhibits. It is worrisome, I know that I'm worried about it, my staff is worried about it. They've come into my office and said, "What happens if?" You know, and those are the questions you kind of have to ponder and say, "Well, you know, we have to kind of bear with it, figure out how to get back on the ground, and put..." You know, I don't know the exact answer to that, but we would have to deal if something disastrous was to happen.
I guess something that also concerns me as a commission member is, I'm glad that you're here right now, but if there are any other facilities that are having these issues, if there is a way that we could find out faster, before the problem becomes larger, and winds up costing us more money, in this situation, and others, maybe?
Just so you know, the majority of the leaks on this building early on were through seams, not necessarily the integrity of the roof, or the structure component of the roof. Now, the issue has also become is the, the old is now 15 years old, and it's come to the time where it needs to be replaced, and that's why they're having additional issues that are more concerning, that he's mentioned.
I think as you take off layers of the roof, you're going to probably encounter more issues.
Do you recall when the settlement took place, or the arrangement or agreement? Masumenes?
The only thing I remember is testifying-
It must have been 2011 or 2012, because I remember sitting through the executive session of it, and being shocked to know that-
I know it was ongoing for at least three years, that I can, that I remember, once we finished the project. And there were several issues besides the roof.
Okay, so this is a really stupid question, probably, because I'm not an engineer, but obviously this was bad, et cetera, et cetera, and we need to repair it. But in the meantime, you know how they tent houses for termites and stuff? Is there a way to rig some kind of tenting over the building meantime?
There's so many sporadic issues throughout, it's kind of, you almost have to tent the whole roof at this point. Yeah, it's, we discussed that in-house, to see if we could do immediate repairs. I mean, we've walked the roof countless times, and, you know, the amount of repairs throughout the roof, they're at the point where it's not a repair anymore, it's a complete replacement.
So there's no, like, tent that fits the whole building?
I mean, we can, but the cost for the time that you're away from doing it, I mean, I don't think the issues are going to get any worse in the next couple of months while we get the design ready and advertised.
I was just thinking about a hurricane, and, you know, losing exhibits.
Yeah, it's very concerning, especially with the, with the Costumes of the Americas, with all their costumes. I know they've taken several of them out, so it is concerning.
I've looked into the tent option, and because we're so close to the water, it's not feasible for them to tie things down. And the wind factor also makes it extremely complicated to try and cover the roof, because they would have to go almost three stories high, since we have towers. It just wasn't, I've checked with several contractors on it, and they just wouldn't even touch the project, it was too much of a liability.
I guess so, maybe we should have a continuing item to discuss what happened with the legal situation, and see if there's anything else we can do about it.
So, Doro, what's the timeframe, once this is approved, the design's approved, what's, you know, from design to, you know-
Yeah, we just mentioned that. Design's about 60 to 90 days, we can talk. We have preliminary drawings already, so I mean, we can probably get it out a little bit quicker. But I'd say about at least two to three months before we come back to the commission for approval of a construction contract.
Thank you. We've been very grateful for your time. If I can do anything to help move this along, please count on me. I've been working with Rudy directly myself as well, so we'll stay on it, but I appreciate you all really taking this into consideration, and getting us some help that we need to get this place back into right order.
The money you mentioned, they came from the Mitty renovation. Was any of it dedicated to the roof, or was it just for other, other things?
The money that the foundation gave was for the total project, and so the total project was renovation of Dean Porter Park. It was the construction of our building, and so it was the whole project altogether.
See if they were included in any of that litigation.
At this time, we have Consent Agenda Items, Letter A. Question to approve, second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed, motion carries.
At this time, we have our presentation for the city's proposed fiscal year 2020 budget.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Elizabeth Walker, and I'm joined by members of the finance team, so that we can continue what it is we've started. This is part two of two of the City of Brownsville fiscal year 2020 budget. This evening, as part of that continuing dialogue, we'll review some of the innovative practices we will be presenting to you as part of the upcoming year. This includes a fleet replacement program, that includes a combination of lease and purchases, a facilities improvement plan by performance contract, potentially proactive management of long-term liabilities by establishing an OPEB trust, and multi-year budgeting forecasting in response to Senate Bill 2. We'll also have the fiscal year 2020 proposed budget, as well as outline the upcoming budget calendar.
Good evening, my name's Steven, I'm with the Finance Department. Okay, so the fleet replacement program is an initiative to right-size, right-type the municipal white fleet. And what that means is, we looked at every vehicle, we assessed whether they have the right one for the job, then we created a schedule of when it would be replaced, based on several factors, such as the age of the vehicle, the maintenance cost, and how long it spends in the shop. And some other considerations that went into this were, how can we minimize maintenance costs, capture more equity, mitigate some safety concerns, and maximize our economies of scale? And as we did this exercise, we noticed that there was three departments in particular that were just going through- three departments in particular that were just going through their vehicles at an accelerated rate. Uh, these were parks, public works, and the traffic department. And it's just because they're so heavily reliant on, uh, their vehicles to get their jobs done. So the plan kind of evolved to replace these vehicles on a five-year basis. And we looked at several financial models to do it and we limited it down to these two, of which we favor the hybrid lease, where we would lease the vehicles for those three departments and still purchase, uh, vehicles for the admin-type departments. And the direct purchase is kind of a cash-only option that mimics the hybrid lease plan. Uh, we're kind of highlighting year one here. Um, with the hybrid lease, we're able to roll out more vehicles at once and address the concerns immediately. Uh, with the direct purchase plan, it's a little, uh, takes a little longer to roll out the vehicles and get them to where they need to be. Uh, it does cost a little bit more, but there are some factors that mitigate, um, that price disparity. Uh, these are some of the issues.
How does the maintenance, how do you save that much maintenance versus the direct purchase on the hybrid lease? In other words, you're getting twice as many cars but saving, like, two, a third more?
We're replacing the worst of the worst right off the bat. Those are, it's not all the fleet that's really that bad, but there's a good number of them.
Okay.
Uh, some of the other concerns we have are the outdated safety features. Uh, sixty percent of the vehicles are over ten years old, so they're missing some of the latest crash technology and airbag deployment stuff. Uh, we also have deteriorating vehicle conditions such as, uh, lowered fuel efficiency and, uh, they have a higher carbon footprint. They just pollute more. Um, this plan also creates cost predictability, uh, in the form of reducing maintenance costs and keeping them low. Uh, it also stabilized the vehicle procurement process, uh, making it easier to budget multi-year. It also provides us dynamic opportunities such as, uh, we get a chance to leverage our economies of scale in the form of negotiating for additional rebates. Um, we have the ability to expand or contract the lease program. Uh, we're not married to it, but we have the, we think it's going to be very successful and we hope to expand it. Uh, we also have the prospect of buying out leased vehicles, um, at the end of the five years. And this is beneficial to departments such as the landfill who operate in a very corrosive environment. We don't really want to get them a new vehicle because it immediately starts to rust, but we want to get them something that is safe and reliable. Um, this is a year-to-year comparison between the two plans. The hybrid lease is in green and the direct purchase is in blue. Um, as you can see, the direct purchase is cheaper on average per year, but it does come out ahead in a couple of years. And, um, down here, I want to point out that of those sixty, sixty-three vehicles, fifty-five would go to public works, traffic, and depart, and, um, parks. Um, the direct purchase, the thirty vehicles, only twenty-two of those would go to the, to those departments. So it would take, it actually takes three years to get that level of vehicles to the departments that need it the most. Um, and I'd like to point out, uh, year six, where we would, those fifty-five vehicles would go out, would get brand-new fifty-five vehicles for those departments, keeping them operating at a hundred percent efficiency. And, um, we can kind of do it with the other plan, but it, it's just a lot slower rollout and that's just due to the city's cash flows. We can't get that many vehicles that fast. Um, this plan also gives us a chance to move away from the practice of using long-term debt for a shorter-term asset. Um, we also get the chance to maximize, uh, return of equity by using enterprises suppliers to dispose of the vehicles. Um, that would net us above black book value for the vehicles, um, which is ten, fifteen thousand. So those initial fifty-five that we'd get in year six, we would turn around, dispose them through the suppliers and get, if we got ten thousand for each one, we'd get five hundred and fifty thousand, which, uh, really brings that price disparity down. Um, versus how we currently do it through auction and we'd get roughly a thousand dollars per vehicle that way. Um, it also gives us a chance to treat, uh, maintenance as a perpetual issue and address it proactively, which ensures that the operations continue, uh, at a hundred percent and the departments are working at full capacity. Um, this is just a breakdown of our current maintenance costs. Uh, the red line is two hundred and fifty-five thousand. That's what we're looking at for maintenance costs and it's been that way for a couple of years. With our plan, it will come down to two hundred and twenty-five thousand and more importantly, we'll keep it at that level. We'll prevent it from creeping back up. This last slide is just a, a schedule of which departments are going to get what, uh, throughout the plan, and it's more for informational purposes. And this concludes this portion of the presentation. And I'll, and I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Walker.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On proposed innovation, you're proposing to use the bridge fund, uh, as a resource. So are you proposing to use it all? Because we've been using it, part of it for those, uh, opening extra lanes and stuff. So we all.
That's a great question. Uh, when we get into the fiscal year twenty part of the budget, what you'll see, and this was also covered in the first part, is because of the spike in appraisal values and the, the revenue that that provided, we had, over the past five years, increased our rely, our, our dependence on the bridge fund transfer from about one point five in 2014 to four million dollars this year. So what we're doing is we're proposing to cap the bridge fund transfer to the general fund because it is a very vulnerable source of revenue to things like the best-sell in the market and things like that. So we're going to restore that back to 2018 levels and take that million dollars and use a portion of that to cash fund capital outlay, which is the smaller capital items that are, that were used to be part of the CIP. And that was also covered last, last meeting. And the difference, the other six hundred, uh, six hundred thousand would go toward funding the lease program. A portion of the lease program.
So you'll, you'll have some funds available to do the lane openings at the bridge. That is, you're aware of that MOU, right?
That's still going to be available. This is going to be money that used to go to the general fund that we are now backing out, using some of the increase that came in from the appraised values and using that to fund two critical needs. One is ongoing capital outlay, uh, and then one is our fleet program.
So my only concern with this, and I think it's a good idea because I've, I've seen some of the city fleets and actually been in the older cars and the ACs go out and then that's the compressor, which is five hundred dollars. And so, I mean, it just, it gets ridiculous to see how much money we're spending, um, when we purchase the car and then get a thousand dollars for it in return, which is nothing, versus, you know, spending a couple of hundred dollars per month and actually winding up with, um, a better value for the city. But my only concern is we buy a lot of our cars local and maintain them local. So this lease purchase, where is it coming from? Or do you even know who it's going to come from? And then, second of all, is it possible to still maintain the cars locally and not have to, you know, direct all of our money out of the city just to save money?
Yeah, the maintenance is still going to be done in-house through how we treat all our other vehicles. Um, the vendor we'd be using is, uh, Enterprise and they actually do have experience with local governments, um, in the area. So that's what we're using.
Are they local?
So let me add to that, too. So potentially, should the commission want to explore the option of relying on a commercial fleet service such as Enterprise? And I think there's one other that's, um, that's identified on the various co-ops in which it is we participate. But should this, the city be inclined to go that way? Um, typically what happens is we rely on their economies of scale. They're buying not just for Brownsville, but they're buying for all their customers, which is how it is they're able to then negotiate down a lower price. However, the vehicles are delivered locally, so they pass through the inventory of a local dealership.
And they count here?
Yes, so it counts here.
So I was wondering, the sales tax and all of that.
Yes, and then getting them ready for our final specifications. Those are all done at the local dealership, too. So there will be money infused in the local market.
So the answer is yes.
Okay, thanks. That's what I was wondering.
I have a question. Um, how much debt is there currently on, on, for COs that are, for fleet that's no longer around? I don't know if you have the answer to that.
I'm not sure right now.
That's probably a hard calculation, but I know, you know, you said you were funding, or we were funding, um, cars or for, for vehicles that, you know, have a useful life of, you know, five to ten years and we were issuing COs for fifteen or, you know, so.
Yes, sir. Regrettably, we were using a longer-term financing instrument which outlived the life of the asset.
Okay.
But you don't know the balance is on any of those?
I guess to go back and extrapolate that would be an exercise that potentially could be done. Typically, what was done, it was, uh, the CO was bundled and they had several different items. And one of those, it was just kind of a catch-all. Part of that involves some fleet, light, light to medium fleet. Heavy fleet, and that's a great question because longer-term debt financing or lease purchases are, is appropriate for, let's say, a fire engine. That's a million dollars. One, it's very expensive. It's large unplanned expense, or you can plan for it, but typically they're twenty years in life. So it's very appropriate for a motor grader, a fire engine, not so much for the light to medium fleet, which is where we were kind of neglecting that portion of the fleet. Would this program apply to the police department as well?
Not at this time, but that is something that potentially we could expand. Um, as I understand it, the police, so the police department is not included in the plan as presented today because they have a great plan already internally that's working very well for them. They actually have a partnership with another municipality where, a municipality who runs a similar program to what it is we are proposing. Once it is, they retire their fleet at sixty thousand miles, our police officers have, our police department, excuse me, almost has a right of first refusal to their vehicles as they're being retired, which is appropriate for our department because they use them as take-home vehicles. They don't have quite the wear and tear because they're only in service eight hours a day.
Okay. Thank you. The other thing is typically cities, at the very least, have good replacement schedules for their public safety equipment, like patrol vehicles. Last thing you want is a patrol vehicle breaking down. So that's very typical. It's really where, it's really this fleet that gets left out. It's the other stuff. It's the parks, the public works, the traffic. That, that's what gets neglected. So this program is aimed, not that we, if we find that there's a cost benefit, including those other vehicles, we can explore and expand it. But typically, cities at least fund their public safety. It's the other stuff that gets that down. Okay. Thank you.
Well, I'm excited to see that you're looking for ways to save money on our next budget. That's exciting.
Oh, thank you, ma'am. Actually, that segues beautifully into the, the next innovative concept that we'd like to present for you this evening. Thank you so much, Steven.
If Lupe's standing behind you happy about it, something good is.
Something good is happening here. So regrettably, just as we've deferred replenishment of our fleet, we have also deferred maintenance on our facilities. And you heard from the children's museum earlier this evening. Um, you'll see in a later slide that that is, um, symptomatic across the organization. Historically, we've only allocated as an organization about one percent of our funds to building maintenance. So what we, that presents for us an opportunity then to maybe consider something that we've never done before, um, a, as a way to get done what it is we haven't yet been able to do. Namely, what it is we present to you this evening conceptually is an energy savings performance contract. Um, it's specified here in, in title nine of chapter three zero two. Um, an energy savings performance contract as defined means a contract with a provider for energy or water conservation or uses measures in which the estimated energy savings, utility cost savings, increase in billable revenues, or increase in meter accuracy resulting from the measures is subject to guarantee to offset the cost of the energy or water conservation or usage measures over a specific period. What is important to call from this definition is two things. The first is that there's the guarantee of the utility savings. And secondly, that those savings are then leveraged for capital needs. So this does not affect our traditional debt capacity. Here's an illustration of essentially how it would work, but we'll walk through it a little bit. The benefits, other than those, the guarantee and the, the separation from reliance on, on traditional debt capacity, is that we could reduce utility costs, address deferred maintenance, extend useful life of equipment, and reinvest those savings into capital improvements. So let me show you some examples of potential opportunities. This is limited to fit to the screen, but there's actually two hundred forty-three improvements within the city's facilities inventory. Um, two hundred forty-three buildings and, and I walked many of them. So let me tell, on the left-hand column are the types of opportunities that we could use through this energy savings, um, plan. Interior lighting, exterior lighting, um, that's an acronym for, um, building automation system upgrades. HVAC is air conditioning. Building envelope. You can see the list down the left. Roofing replacements, we've identified here, though typically they don't have a significant quantifiable energy return. But we left those here because, as you can see across those columns to the right, there is a need for roofing replacements. Obviously, at the children's museum, I don't have identified here, but certainly we could make sure that we account for the Camille Playhouse and the Civic Pavilion as identified in earlier conversations. But this is meant to serve as a representative sample of the different, um, improvements potentially that we can make at different facilities. Let me show you then how kind of the math works. We could perhaps make the following energy efficiency improvements. These are the, the energy upgrades. These then correspond to the costs that go off to the right of the screen. So the cost to make these improvements, like building automation systems or lighting or HVAC, let's say, costs three million seven hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Again, this is only intended to be a sample. Let's say the savings then, that would then have to be guaranteed by, through this performance contract, would be six million dollars over a fifteen-year life expectancy of those capital improvements. What you find then on the right-hand most green box is what is the estimated delta utility savings? What's the, what's the net savings over the fifteen-year period? In this instance, um, based on this kind of example, would be two million two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. So how then could we use that, that two-point-two million dollars? There are a whole bunch of other needs. We could appropriate that, that two-point-two million dollars to get some traction on some other potential projects that you can see here. Um, some electrical infrastructure upgrades both at City Hall and at La Plaza. We have other needs. We already know that we have. You can see those listed in red. What we could do then, as the city manager had mentioned earlier this evening, is we could repurpose some of our existing COs, our existing certificates of obligation, and potentially issue new COs. The next step, should we proceed with this concept, kind of entertain this idea of leveraging a performance contract to get caught up on some of our facility needs, generate the extra, um, savings to apply towards other capital needs, would be an investment-grade audit. Um, some other firms sometimes identify that as a utility, utility audit report. But either way, they're almost interchangeable. An, an independent firm would come in with a team of engineers. They would walk through the buildings like I did and they would have to generate their own calculations on what it is they would estimate would be the return on investment for certain energy improvements and how much that would generate in savings over a term. Then we could come back to the commission with more informed numbers about how that, what work we think we could accomplish through that energy program, what savings then we would generate through the same program and how it is that we would recommend applying that savings and then augmenting the savings with existing COs. Any questions for me about this innovative concept of performance contract? Yes, sir.
Are y'all looking into solar energy for this, uh, to help out with lighting or any of that?
We would absolutely, sir. I think nothing is off the table at this point. If it could demonstrate the return on investment that we need to, to leverage to make other improvements, we would certainly consider it.
Do, do you know if, you know, there's this thirty percent tax credit, but I don't know if it's just for residential or if it includes municipalities or?
No, we're eligible for a lot of the same. We, we are eligible for some of the same rebates.
I think y'all should look into the Tesla Power Walls. Free energy.
Yeah, so just. I would suggest looking into that.
Yeah, anything that falls under the various measures on the energy efficiency side, solar being one of those, um, that could be a means, for example, of helping over time keep our costs contained and being more sustainable. Um, I think for us, we can look at that. The theme is, we were working on this concepts thus far, was to kind of keep it more meat and potatoes and basic because of the volume of needs that we had. But that doesn't mean that we're not going to look at other options. If you look at the list, we have inception lighting, so we're even considering, uh, as a value add to potentially do some lighting around Market Square. That would be some LED decorative lighting that could help enhance the look of Market Square at night. So we are open to the menu of items that are out there. The focus preliminarily has been so focused on the needs, but we won't rule out solar and other options.
Yeah, there might even be some grants. I know with the Ozenon, we got a grant to do, uh, do it over there.
So are the, any of these items in the bu, in the current budget or is, or are you just giving us the idea?
Yes, none of these are, so technically, the existing COs are in the budget. They're in the capital improvement fund, the initial, the intent of. They're in the capital improvement fund, the initial, the intent of. We have about four million dollars right now that was meant for the library expansion. We'd be repurposing those toward roof replacement of our facilities. That still leaves a balance. We'd look at possibly issuing new COs for that balance. And then the difference would come from any potential improvements that could self-fund themselves through this program. So when we come back to the commission, we're going to package it up. And, and the key would be to have pretty much a design-build approach. And it would be a turnkey project. Some would be local funds, which would be COs, and some of that would be the performance contract. But, but the, the way the project would work, it would be a turnkey approach. So they become your general contractor, and they oversee the entire project. So we want to package it and do it at one time, to do it more streamlined, and have one person that we could pinpoint to that would work with all the subcontractors for all the improvements.
Those, the thirty percent tax credit expires in about eighteen months, I think. From what I understand, I think it's going to reduce, and then it's going to go away. So for, for the, for the solar.
Okay, okay.
Solar energy.
There are a lot of energy rebates that are available. Remember, when I bought my car, I got ten thousand dollars.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner, I'll continue with the presentation. One of the other future innovations that we're going to be working on is we contracted with consultant, TCG Consultants, to help us address our other post-employment benefits liability. As you recall, on our fiscal year 2018 financials, one of the items that came up was Gatsby seventy-five, in which it required us to book our healthcare benefits on the face of the financials, on the, on the statement of net position. That amount is fifty-eight million dollars. What we're planning to do, to be fiscal responsible and, and have a stability on this fund, where we are going to be proposing, or we're actually going to be, have the ability to invest, some investments in our, in our other post-employment liabilities. This is by setting up a trust fund that's allowed under the Internal Revenue Code Trust, Section one fifteen trust. In order to do this, we're going to be, we're going to, we're proposing to have a one-time bridge fund transfer contributions of a million dollars in order to help us. Basically, what happens on this, they'll invest that million dollars outside the Texas Investment Public Funds in order to help us have, match up our, increase our revenues to help address our liabilities over a long period of time. Another item that, if future innovations is, we're going to be working on multi-year budget forecasting. Currently, we, it's been, we haven't been doing the multi-year budget forecasting. This is to help us address similar issues like the Senate bill cap that was just passed. This Senate bill cap is going to affect our property tax rate. It doesn't affect us this year, but we, there's a what-if scenario on there. And basically, what, what's most notably noticeable about this bill is the property tax rollback rate. Instead of being eight percent, it drops it down to three and a half percent. What does that mean? If you see the bar graphs on there, the rollback rate, calculated rollback rate was at seventy-one eighty-nine. If this bill was, if this cap was in effect this year, the maximum that we could raise the cap was point sixty-nine thirty-one oh five. So basically, we couldn't go above that amount unless, because it would trigger a, an election, a mandatory election that we'd have to make in order to make sure that we have that, that rate applied. This year, we're requesting that the current rate be maintained at seventy cents. This is a similar schedule. Again, the bars in blue is represented tax levies for, for the various years. The gray line there has a tax levy at the maximum rollback rate. As you can see, for 2018, it doesn't affect us. But if that three and a half percent cap was, was in effect, it would cap us off at fifty-eight, fifty-eight point nine million dollars. Basically, we would be losing about three hundred, about four hundred eighty-two thousand dollars that we wouldn't be able to utilize to, to work with our budget this year. Now we get to the 2020 budget. We have a three point four percent, excuse me, three point four million dollar monies to expand public services this year, and we're also going to cover medical costs. The first slide on here, this is your, all your funds, your combining revenue funds, which includes governmental and enterprise funds. The top four government funds revenues, of course, the first one is property taxes. Makes up about forty-nine million dollars or thirty, almost thirty-two percent. It's followed by fees and services of thirty-seven point five million dollars or twenty-four point four percent. Then, sales tax of thirty and a half million dollars, about twenty percent. And the top, the fourth one is POB transferring, utility transfer of fourteen point four million dollars and nine and a half percent. Total revenues, one hundred fifty-three million point four, excuse me, one hundred fifty-three point four million dollars in total revenues. Similar sketch, similar pie graph, this represents the expenditures of governmental funds and enterprise funds. Again, revenues match expenditures of one hundred fifty-three point four million dollars. The, the main expenditure that you have on all of them is public safety. Covers about forty-one point six percent or sixty-four million dollars. It's followed by debt service fund. This is all the outstanding bonds that we have in debt service payment. This is an annual payment of twenty point nine million dollars or thirteen point seven percent. General government, twenty point three million dollars, thirteen percent. And all operating expenditures, all other enterprise funds, seventeen point three million dollars or eleven point three percent. This is a general fund. You have your adopted budget, your latest budget, and your proposed budget. What we're, what we're proposing is, proposing is having a balanced budget of a hundred and nine million six hundred, excuse me, sixty-seven thousand three hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. This represents a balanced budget. What it doesn't, what it doesn't have here towards the bottom, you have street requests of about three million dollars. In our last presentation, there was a slide regarding the shortage or the gap that we have on street maintenance. It's about three million dollars. It's not included on the budget. Similar slide or gap that we had also previously made in part one of the presentation was a drainage maintenance gap of one point three million dollars. On the immigrants influx expense, we have, they're offsetting each other. We anticipate to gain the revenues that we're spending on this. Now we're going to be talking about the general fund revenues and cash transfer. Total revenues in the general fund, a hundred and nine point one million dollars. Again, the top four revenue sources, property taxes, thirty-one point two million dollars or twenty-eight point six percent, followed by sales taxes at thirty, thirty and a half million dollars, twenty-eight percent. POB cash transfer and utility services, fourteen point four million dollars. This includes a cash transfer in utility usage. And then followed by operating transfers from other funds. This is the, the amount that bridge fund, that instead of four million dollars, we're reducing it to three point one million dollars, and the landfill fund. On this one, if you recall, we're transferring, we're setting up an enterprise fund called the landfill so that we could properly record all the expenditures or all the revenues on there and showing the dependency that general fund has on the landfill operations, about nine point three million dollars. On the general fund expenditures, this is by function. Total function, if you see, public safety, sixty-two point six million dollars or fifty-seven point four percent of the budget.
Where does the, the parking come in, the revenues from parking? Is it fees, fines, contributions, or?
That would be in the motor vehicle parking system fund, sir. It's not reflected here, but in the, on the, let me see here. On the enterprise funds, it would be under miscellaneous revenue. Actually, the miscellaneous revenue would be under that section, which would be Slide twenty-five. Because the amount is so, so not that significant on the bar graph, you would have it represented under miscellaneous revenues.
Do you know firsthand how much it is, the revenues?
Four hundred and sixty thousand in Puerto Rico, Parkinson.
Parking revenues.
That's a lot of quarters.
For the meters.
That's a lot of quarters.
Yes. Continuing the expenditures, I was saying that on public safety, of course, fifty-seven percent. But just want to note out that public safety includes fire, EMS, PD, traffic, graphics, ordinance enforcement, and building inspection. It's not just fire and PD. It includes all the other. Governmental funds would be the next one.
Are the expenditures for the meter maids a part of that, that item?
Not in this one. They would be on the motor vehicle parking system. We'd have an enterprise fund. That would be, it's, it's in the combined governmental and enterprise funds, and it has its own separate fund.
Do you know how much that expense is?
It's, it's, it's a little bit less than that, it's about. Four hundred and sixty.
Are there any other expenditures related to parking?
I could, I don't have that information right now, Prancer. I could make sure, follow up with it.
What we can do is next, because we still have some other meetings left, we can bring a drill down version of the fund.
This is the general fund expenditure by classification. Of course, the majority of the general fund expenditures is deal with personnel costs, or seventy-three percent of the budget, general fund budget, is personnel, about seventy-nine point six million dollars. And the personnel is broken up into three segments, fire EMS, twenty-one million dollars or twenty-six point four percent. Police, thirty-two million dollars, forty percent. And all other funds make up the twenty-six point six million dollars or thirty-three point four percent. This is a history of the sales tax. These are actual sales tax revenues collected. For 2019, projected is above budget right now. Budget is about twenty-nine point three percent. We're projecting that it almost hit about thirty million dollars. That's a four point two percent increase. What we did for 2020 proposed budget, we actually added two percent. It is, but it's, this is two percent off of the projected numbers, not two percent of the budget. So that, that is a very aggressive calculation there. Growth, property tax growth by. You have your actual property tax growth. There's two types of tax growths that we have. The yellow dotted line is growth from new property. This is, this, this is, and it averages about one point eight to one point seven normal growth that we get from year to year. The dotted blue line is tax growth by, growth on existing properties. This is the one that you'll see a rather significant increase in twenty nineteen. This, our levy actually grew about two million dollars. This is attributed to re, commercial properties that were valued higher. We talked to the Cameron appraisal district to ask about this significant growth. And they relayed to us that they're in process of evaluating all their commercial properties. And they're, this is the first phase of, of the evaluation. There's still a second phase to it, but that second phase is a little bit lower amount that they anticipate. But the majority of the revaluation that they did, that they targeted commercial property was, was made, and this was the outcome of the.
Did they indicate, like, where in Brownsville, like, what clusters had the greatest increase? Do we know that?
No, they didn't. I don't, I don't know that, we could get that information, but there was, everything's put together as in actual.
I, I know some properties on Long Boca Chica where we reassessed recently.
Did we ever notice an increase in the new property, especially commercial property, once we adjusted our impact fees? Do you know that in the last two years?
I wouldn't have that information. We could probably work with the appraisal district.
Just look back and see if it made a difference. Yeah. Which is why we did it.
Going back to the dotted line, the taxable value growth, this has been the growth. This, this is an important slide, the building permits values. This is a values, building permits that have been valued. As you see, for 2018, it's almost two hundred million dollars in values. That gets added to the, to the tax roll the following year. Right now, we're trending a hundred thirty-two million dollars. But of course, this is numbers only through the month of June. There is activity. We cannot really project those because we don't know exactly what's going to go through for, for next year. But we anticipate that to grow. This is a certified property tax rolls from fiscal year 2011 to 2020. As you can see, there was an amount there close to about four hundred, five hundred million dollars from last year, 2019 to 2020, fiscal year 2020. It rose from six point six billion dollars to seven point one billion dollars, tax revaluations. General fund growth, as I had mentioned before, that we have, we had about a three point four million dollar growth in, in our revenues and expenditures, excuse me. And because of the spike that we got, well, actually, on this one, what our, our annual growth on this, one point, one point three million dollars. What we would do with the one point three million dollars of all the requests that we would have, we would fund our contract obligations for the fire department, which equates to about four hundred thousand. The other, the other items that we would actually, what we're doing is funding our overtime, nine hundred thousand dollars. This is actually a combination of fire, fire request for overtime. Historically, we would budget about, about five hundred thousand dollars in historic, that's how we would budget this year because they historically have gone over that amount of, of budget. We're actually budgeting actual, what they're spending in overtime. One of the items that we are, we will be working with the fire department is to help address this overtime matter to see if we could get it back to our budgets for last previous years. But for right now, we're, we're, we're budgeting the amounts for the fire department. But we are, we'll be working closely with them to try to see how we could bring those amounts back to the five hundred thousand dollar budgets that we had historically. The difference, what are we funding with two point five million dollars in revenue growth? As a pay-go fund, where one of the proposals is to fund, fund the fleet replacement program, six hundred thousand, capital outlay, four hundred thousand. Now, even though this is not coming out of the general fund, it's coming out of the bridge fund. This is, this, this is a, this is all has to do with us reducing our dependency, our reliance on the, on the bridge fund, reducing that million dollars on the organizational development. What you'll see, well, excuse me. On back of your slide, on your handouts on there, there's, there's a few handouts on there that, that will help answer some of these questions. On the equity adjustment, five hundred thirty-five million dollars. This is the phase two of a compensation plan that was initiated in 2016, 2017. This is a second, this is a second phase of it that we're trying to fund. An info pamphlet on the compensation, what happened on phase one, what's going to happen on phase two, is on your handouts there for your information. We're also funding professional development of seventy thousand dollars. This is above the amount that the departments have requested in their line item budget. This is for professional development. On the, on the strategy and structures, again, there's also a pamphlet on there. What we're addressing here is under planning development. We're having actually the three planning development service positions. There is two new positions. One is an ordinance enforcement officer and a building inspector, and the other one's a senior planner. The third position that's on there, basically, is a reclassification, a reclassification from the NPO planner. It's going to be a planner one. So the planning and redevelopment department is getting three positions to help address the, meet the requirements that city manager has, city commission has asked on, on helping out the planning and redevelopment positions. Under leadership positions, there are two new, new, new positions, the communication and marketing director. Fifty percent of this, their position is going to be funded by the hotel motel tax. The second one's internal service director. This is to centralize the fleet and facilities and five for six help. And the last position for the leadership, basically, it's a reclassification from the existing director position. We're, we're reclassifying that to a planning and redevelopment director services. This is the vacancy that was created as a reclassification of current position of retail and redevelopment manager. Excuse me, on the, on the multimodal, on the multimodal, on the three multimodal transportation positions, basically, there are three reclassifications. There's the bike and pet coordinator that was previously funded under the Parks Department, is being moved. was previously funded under the parks department, is being moved over to the multimodal term, uh, term, uh, excuse me, multimodal position, and there's two transit position planners that are also being, uh, reclassified as from the NPO positions. This is debt service schedule. Basically, it shows our debt service went up about a million dollars, uh, from nineteen point two million dollars to twenty point two million dollars. And the, the, the amounts that we're going to be funded is broken down into the principal and interest, uh, on these outside, outstanding debt. One of, one of the items, the last item we have here is a medical plan deficit scenario. Right now, uh, our medical plan, the way it is right now, as is currently, police plan and civilian, city plan, fire department plan, we're, we're currently, we're currently having a deficit of about one point eight million dollar deficit. If we make, if we don't make any changes, we have to fund about one point eight million dollars to keep these plans, uh, intact. Uh, we had three different scenarios that we came up with. Um, on scenario two, all police employees and retirees roll into the plan C, into the civilian plan. This, basically, this is plan C, uh, which has a six hundred fifty dollar deductible and a one million dollar, excuse me, one, one thousand dollar, uh, out-of-pocket, uh, expense. That drops down their deficit to one point five million dollars. Scenario three, the cities, the city, the city employees and fire department move to a higher plan, to, to a plan of a thousand dollar deductible, three thousand out-of-pocket. Police roll into our current plan, which is a six hundred fifty dollar deductible, one thousand dollar uh, other, uh, out-of-pocket expense. That would drop it down to about seven hundred thousand. And the best case scenario that we have here is everybody rolls into the same plan, which is at the higher out-of-pocket amount of one thousand dollars or three thousand out-of-pocket. That basically would close the gap on the deficit on here. Those are, those are some items that we're, we're evaluating. Um, one of the items that, uh, I think we, the, the plan C or the city's, city's plan, we're, we're actually going to be going already to the one thousand dollar deductible, three thousand out-of-pocket. Uh, we're changing our plan. The civilian plan is being changed right now, going from the six fifty to a thousand dollar plan, in order to try to mitigate this issue.
The cost?
Yes.
So the fire and police will stay the same, but civilians are being cut?
Actually, fire and civilians are the, are in the same plan. Police is, is on a separate plan. Police, because of contract, uh, we are not able to make any changes currently to the plan, as part of negotiations, but for the civilian and fires, they're together, and there will be some changes on that one.
Which scenario did you, did you go with, did you say?
Uh, right now, the only scenario, and it's not here, but basically, the scenario is that, uh, plan C would be going from six fifty to a thousand dollar deductible, and the out-of-pocket going from a thousand to three thousand. That would, but that only applies to plan C, which is a fire and civilian plan.
And you're leaving police alone?
We're ongoing negotiations with them.
That's your proposal.
Yes. Uh, this is a public hearing. Please, anybody has a question?
I'd like to read the agenda item. Public hearing to discuss the city's proposed fiscal year 2020 budget.
Brad Burks, and I take it the next item is tax rate. This is actually the budget, right?
Correct.
I just want to give my input. When, when they did the surveys to find out what was important to the people of Brownsville, uh, the things that we heard the most were, of course, public safety, streets, and drainage. And there's a lot of other fun items that we like to do in the city of Brownsville that are, are really nice, but if your house gets flooded, you're not going to care about those other nice items. You're not going to, if your car gets flooded, you're not going to care about those other nice items. Uh, I think we need to put more money into the, again, the streets, drainage, and of course, public safety. If you find yourself, uh, waiting twenty minutes for an ambulance, whatever other nice items aren't really going to mean a lot. Uh, and of course, tonight, we heard about the, the problems with the roofs around the city. Uh, we need to, obviously, we need to protect our, our investments. Uh, some of the prices I'm hearing concerning construction concern me, and I, I heard, uh, John Cowan mention that, uh, that, that sounds high, and it sounds high to me, too. And I, I think we need to investigate some of the numbers that are thrown out and see, is that real? And when we heard about, uh, energy savings, I, I, obviously, that, I think that's a good investment. And sometimes the roof energies and energy savings go together. When you have a roof that reflects the sun, that, that is probably a longer-lasting roof. It might cost a little bit more, but it also, uh, helps for the energy savings. And I think that's something we need to look at and weigh. Uh, but anyway, that, that's my input. When I look at public works only getting seven point eight percent of the budget, and I'm guessing that's where the streets and drainage comes from, uh, maybe that needs to be tweaked a little bit. Uh, and also, one more thing, as far as the materials we're using for the streets, I, I've been in other cities where potholes do not appear that quick, and the answer I hear so often here is, oh, it rains. Guess what? It rains everywhere. And in fact, up north, not only does it rain, but it freezes and thaws, which is much tougher on streets than, uh, just having a rain. And typically, where I came from last, Omaha, Nebraska, the streets are good all the way until the next thaw, a year later. Here, we patch a street, and a month later, that pothole is appearing again. So something's wrong with the way we're doing our streets. Uh, I, I have not personally investigated it, but I'm guessing there's better, uh, processes and better materials that would save us a lot of money. Uh, if you're spending twice as much on the materials and you're only doing it once a year instead of six or seven times a year, we've saved money. So, uh, it's my input.
So, just to add with what he said, I know we had discussed it a few days ago, that the maintenance of our streets, um, had been stopped. That is going to be included in this next budget, right? We are dedicating a portion of it to start maintaining, because I know once we paved them, we used to do something called, uh, we would seal the street a few years after, and it would maintain the life. And a few years ago, we stopped doing that, and so for a couple of years, our maintenance, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that the streets and drainage was discussed in detail last workshop. We went into detail, and, and the streets and drainage is part of the capital improvement program for reconstruction purposes, and we also discussed the maintenance in terms of how, how much is invested into each, uh, both drainage and street. So, we'd be happy to, um, share some of that with you all. But that is part of the capital program. We have four million dollars program for streets. We have a loan of seven million dollars for or not for drainage. But, I mean, that's just a part of what the needs are, but we did go into detail last meeting, so we can share that presentation and answer any detailed questions.
Is that an increase from?
Well, actually, no. Great, great question. What we have currently is, we've been investing about four million dollars a year in street reconstruction, and that number can be as higher, as high as we can, uh, as high as we want it to be, but it, it's a question of resources. We have, uh, we know that our street liability overall is just over a billion dollars. Uh, we have to be investing somewhere around sixty-five million dollars a year to fix our streets completely over twenty years. So, there's a lot of work there on the street side, and it boils down to resources. So, uh, but, but last meeting, we talked about that. At the end of the day, I think the, the theme here, when it comes to our facilities, when it comes to our fleet, which compete for the same dollars that streets and drainage does, um, it boils down to resources. So, growing, how we grow, if you look at some of those graphs on sales tax and property tax growth, when we do our fiscal year forecast, part of why we do that is, at what rate and how do we need to be growing so that our rate, our, our revenue can give us enough resources to make headway on these issues? If not, we're just kind of trading water. And that's why we need to get more focused on economic development, growing the pie, growing the resources, but all that is connected. Resources drive our ability to fund our infrastructure.
Well, part of the economic, economic development is just not chasing away business, and I appreciate what you're doing, streamlining our permit process, because I hear from a lot of people that have tried to open business in Brownsville, got frustrated, went to Harland, Jenner, McAllen, and that's the main issue, is permits, uh, permits, inspections, and , uh, our zoning issues. Uh, you know, ob, obviously, we don't want, uh, a steel mill in the center of Brownsville, but, uh, we're chasing away other little businesses that are really not, uh, that, uh, that, that don't hurt health of the, of the city and do provide jobs. And I, I think we need to be more open to allowing business to come into Brownsville. That's economic development, right? So, thank you.
Any questions? Uh, just need an item to continue public hearing for next week.
Uh, I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing until next week.
Second?
If it was second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Action item number three, public hearing to discuss the 2019 ad valorem tax rate for fiscal year 2020.
Uh, commissioners, I'll go over the property tax rate. Uh, anytime the city proposes a tax rate above the effective rate or rollback rate, as we discussed on August sixth meeting, we must have two public hearings to have the public voice or questions or concerns. And basically, the effective tax rate that was calculated for tax year 2019 was at point six six one three seven four. This rate is the same rate, uh, amount, amount of property tax revenues from the same properties in both fiscal year 2018, 2019, basically getting both, keep, uh, not increasing revenues, keeping the revenues the same they are from, from one year to the, the other. Uh, this rate will result in a two point four million dollar shortfall to our budget. Uh, the current rate that we're proposing to maintain is point seven zero zero one six three. This rate will balance the general fund budget. A percentage increase over the effective rate is five point nine three percent. This rate has been the same rate since fiscal year 2012, or nine years. That's broken down into the MNO, MNO meaning the general fund, how much amount goes into general fund, and how much goes into the debt service to take care of our outstanding debt. The calculated rollback, uh, tax rate, this is a rate that's the highest the city may adopt before voters are entitled to rollback petition. Uh, this is at point seventy-one eighty-nine, uh, eighty-nine one two, uh, one two. Um, notices that were put out in the newspaper and on our website listed this as the, the maximum rollback rate or the proposed. We do that to make sure that in case there's anything that this, that there's a need for the city. If we don't publish that, we could only publish the highest rate that we publish. If we publish seventy cents, and there was a need for us to go above that for, for some reason, we wouldn't be able to do that. So that, that's why the publications came out that way. This is a, a scheduled additional tax revenue for various tax rates. Again, the current tax rate, yeah, there's no additional revenue, it's already included in the budget. If we apply, if we apply the effective tax rate, we, uh, we, uh, we don't recognize about two point four million dollars. For every half cent, it makes, uh, that we increase the tax rate above the, the, the current tax rate of seventy cents, we earn, we generate about three hundred five thousand dollars for every penny, about six hundred eleven thousand This is, uh, average taxable value of resident, uh, homestead in Brownsville. Last year, the average, they, the value of the homestead was about ninety-three thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. This year, the appraisals went up. That's why the effective rate went down, uh, of ninety-seven point, uh, ninety-seven thousand four hundred forty-three thousand. Um, the, the tax rate based on the, if we, effective tax rate gets approved, there's a decrease of about thirty-eight point twenty-four dollars on the average homeowner. If the current rate, there is, uh, there is no increase, uh, excuse me, there's no tax increase from the current rate, it's from the current rate. They, they might have increase in their, in their property taxes, and this is going to be due to appraised valuations. And the rollback rate, if we adopt the rollback rate, we will get about seventeen point eight, uh, seventeen, seventeen dollars and eighty-three cents increase. This is the analysis of property tax rate. Uh, these are the taxing jurisdictions for fiscal, uh, tax year 2018. As you'll see, city of Brownsville makes up about twenty-six percent of the, of the taxing jurisdictions. The county, sixteen percent. The most notable one is, uh, uh, school district BISD at forty-eight percent, and they have the college at, uh, six percent. One of the items that I wanted to kind of elaborate on Senate Bill Two, again, it doesn't affect us this year, but one of the items that, again, working with, uh, multi-year budgeting, these are some of the items that we really need to, uh, pay attention to, are my side. Uh, again, if the three percent, three point five percent revenue cap was applied, that would be the gray, the gray, uh, bar, uh, bar graph that's there, that would, that rate would actually have to come down to point six nine three one zero five, which would hence be a, a reduction, an automatic reduction in our property tax. Uh, so the, these are some of the items, uh, that we, that come up, that the state is putting, uh, putting limits on how much revenues we get. And, uh, that concludes the...
Just a quick comment on the other slide. Uh, so what, what the cap does not include is, it exempts new growth. So it's only for existing properties, and if you recall the slide that Lupe, uh, spoke to in the other presentation, net raw growth has been less than two percent. So we're not even keeping up with inflation when you consider net new raw growth. So this puts the, the, basically, cities that are, you know, built out, for example, they're in a lot of trouble, because cities that are still able to grow and have acreage to build into have the ability to generate new growth. Those that are doing redevelopment work and want to find ways to grow the existing tax base, they're going to be capped. So this, this goes to show that the new normal, now this is another kind of handicap that we're being put, and it puts us in a position to have to make sure that our new growth, that we're really growing at the, at a healthy pace, so that we can still fund our needs. Um, and then as you grow faster, that also creates appreciations many times of your existing tax base. But regardless, that's gone. You can pretty much do a five-year forecast and cap it at three point five percent and take it to the bank. That's it. Everything else has to be done by new growth. So, as we talk about strategic visioning and, and future planning and future growth, that growth is going to have to do a lot for us to pull us forward as we seek to fund our needs, which is why it's so important that we understand a bit more, what does the next three to five years look like.
So, does that effective rate exclude new growth?
New growth, new growth is excluded on this, on this rollback rate.
On this what-if scenario, it's excluded?
Yes. New growth, you're, you could grow.
So it's, it's included?
Well, the, the cap includes primarily your existing.
Yes. So there is no effect on new growth. New growth, you could grow. That's not a problem. It's only on existing properties, reappraisals, there's a cap of three and a half percent. This, this is a public hearing?
I just want to mention, in case people don't understand, uh, even if we keep the current tax rate, uh, it is a five point nine three percent increase, because that's what the county tax, tax, uh, assessor office, uh, increased our property taxes. The evaluations increased by more than five percent, almost six percent. So, uh, the rate of inflation for 2018 was only two point four four percent, and in recent months, it's been between one point five and one point nine percent. So, we're getting quite an increase if we just keep the, the regular, uh, the rate we've had for quite a few years. Uh, and what we do with it i, is our choice. Uh, I, quite often, I hear, well, one of the former commissioners like to say, we haven't given our, uh, city employees a raise for quite a while, and we need to raise taxes to do that. No, we're getting an increase every year, because the evaluations always go up more than the, uh, rate of inflation. So, uh, yes, if you want to give them raises, that, that, that's our choice. It doesn't have to be a, a tax increase. Uh, you're, you're being handed that by the county tax assessor's office, uh, each year, so.
Yeah, that is, that is correct. That is the way the calculation works.
Uh, so, I mean, if you're struggling to pay your, uh, to pay your taxes, uh, and people, I've talked to people that have lost houses or are struggling just to keep their properties, uh, again, you, you're not going to care about all the frivolous things that we like to do in the city. Uh, you're wanting your taxes kept low. Uh, I recently spoke to a, a nationwide lender, uh, someone that works for a nationwide lender, and he was shocked by the, uh, the, our tax rate here, uh, what we're paying, uh, and, uh...
But you're referring to the Cameron County appraisal district.
Yeah, I am. I am. But what I'm mentioning is that even if you keep the current tax rate, you're getting an increase because evaluations have gone up.
The appraisal district, not the assessor.
I, I'm not, oh, the assessor, thank you. Uh, I, I'm not, I'm not blaming you for the evaluations going up. I think, we just need to admit that we're getting an, an increase if we keep.
They're independent. That, that's why, they're supposed to be independent, the appraisal district.
Okay.
And I would also point out that everyone's definition of frivolous is different.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. Uh, again, when we did the surveys to find out what was important to the city, the people of Brownsville, the things that were most important to the vast of Brownsville, the things that were most important to the vast majority were public safety, streets and drainage, and...
There was a lot found in that survey, and it was a very small survey, keep that in mind.
But I think they're also addressing, our new management is addressing all these things in a very professional way.
Yes, I appreciate that.
Yes, they are.
You saw all the innovations they're implementing.
Yes.
I mean, they should be commended.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, what I would mention is, if you look at that peak, the appraisals for this past year came primarily from industrial and commercial, which means that for years, the city has had under-valued, and, and under-valued tax base. So what happened was, the appraisal district was audited, and they were found to have been undervalued commercial industrial properties, which means that a lot of pressure was being put on rooftops to cover the cost of service and infrastructure. So, that peak you saw in the assessment, that came primarily from industrial, commercial. Can you, can you, how much revenue was not realized over the past five years plus that could have been generated to fund our facilities, our fleet, our streets, our drainage? In addition, last workshop, we had a pie chart, and this is part of what's driving the, the vision going forward. If you look at our existing tax base, which is now just over $7 billion, 72% of that is residential. So going back to your 70-cent tax rate discussion, that's because we're heavily residentially dependent, and until we bring the 5% of industrial up, it's going to continue to put pressure on rooftops. Economic development is about bringing in wealth to relieve the pressure of rooftops, and we're very imbalanced. So until we can diversify and balance our tax base, and hopefully not have other things working against us, like undervalued industrial, commercial properties, it's going to be very difficult, because we have 185,000 people to service that have needs and growing, but it's not being reciprocated by a tax base that provides for the revenues to cover the cost of service. And that's really the, the story and the narrative that I believe we're painting now, and we're assessing, so that going forward, we can pivot and begin to address those very root cause issues.
I think it's very important, what you just said, I've never nodded so much. I think it's very important for the public to understand that, because from people, from a person's perspective, who's a property owner and doesn't understand what's happening here, they just feel and see the number rising and rising and rising, and how am I going to be able to afford my home in 10 years? And so it's very important that the public understands and knows that, that we are doing our best to make sure that we balance, and which is why we've had such a very strong push on bringing an environmentally friendly industrial project to the city, because that relieves all of these homeowners, which is, what did you say, 73% or 76%?
Well, if you look at, if you look at cities that generally carry a tax rate, let's say, between, I challenge you to find cities that have tax rates under 30 cents, they're very seldom, but some, let's say 50 cents, even in the 40 cents. Typically, if you look at that city, you find that they have a very rich tax base. Heavy business parks, heavy industrial, many times, a lot of retail, commercial, Class A offices, so their sales tax is very high, and their property tax base is very high, which allows them to be conservative and pass on that relief to residents through a reduced property tax rate. That's typical. If we had several few billion dollars in our tax base on the, on the ground, on the community, we could likely pass on, but 70 cents covers the base level of service here in Brownsville, and this is that salary increase, that's actually the second part of a now four-year-old study that wasn't fully implemented four years ago, because the city couldn't afford to, and the only reason why we can this year is because of that peak that you saw. We're trying to finally tuck it in and bring some closure into funding a, a study that taken us four years to do, which typically you want to fund it wholly, when it's updated and, and real, based on market. Now, it's, that market has shifted, and we're still not trying to cover a four-year-old study, yeah.
And don't get me wrong, I appreciate each and every one of you, I really appreciate the work you're doing. And one more thing, a lot of times, people don't realize that everybody pays property taxes, even those that are renting, because it's in the price of your, your rental, and if property taxes increase, then your landlord has to increase the, the price of your rent. And a lot of times, people don't think of that. They don't, they don't think property tax is affecting them, because they're not an owner, but it affects all of us, so.
And just in closing, I think the city has been very conservative. The philosophy applied here has been conservative. It just boils down to resources. In, in my first almost 10 months here, my observations have been, we're pretty lean in terms of our service levels. Most of our departments could use some more people, and not that we're wanting to revert to that, we want to be innovative and use technology, and if you look at our fleet and facilities, we're, we're having to be innovative to even fund the needs that have been here for years. But that, that's my, also, my, my philosophy is be very conservative, but the other, the thing is, I haven't seen a lot of fat here. I just know that the, the reality is, we need to grow the tax base. And wherever there is ways to be efficient, we're going to tackle that too. We're going to find ways to be efficient, but nothing alarming has, has come up in my review of, of the city operations.
Okay, I appreciate that. One of the things that came out in the, the recent elections is the, the amount of debt that Brownsville has compared to some of the other cities, and having to service that debt is keeping us from being able to use that money. So, I, I, again, I just, if you're thinking about going into more debt, I, I just urge caution, and make sure that it is an expenditure that's going to be worth going into debt for, that will be a good investment. And I appreciate, like I said, I appreciate each one of you, so thank you.
I'm Linda Montemayor, been around for a long, long time, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, but those who do not remember their history are doomed to repeat it. When I lived here in the 50s and the 60s, Brownsville was the number one in the Valley. It was cosmopolitan, the culture here, our leadership, we outshone everything in the Valley. We had an auditorium that brought in national conventions, it brought in national entertainment. We had a beautiful country club complex going. We had done so much that none of the other cities had even begun to do. Then, what did they do? They sold the convention center, the auditorium, to the college. Yes, we had a college before any of the other cities also. Then, what did they do? They bought land next to a federal facility that they knew they could not keep, because the plans were already there to expand that bridge. So there went that money. Then they brought Brownsville Country Club. Wow. Had fabulous tennis courts, beautiful clubhouse, but what did the city do? They tore up the tennis courts, tore down the clubhouse, and then bought a piece of land out on Paredes, paid a fortune, built a facility that can't house a convention, put in new tennis courts. They, I, I've just seen this, the city waste so much money. They put in a sports park out in the middle of nowhere, that was so extremely underevaluated when, with the estimate on building it, was so low, it was obscenely low, for what they had put into that sports park. And how much, what percentage of the people here actually use it? Now there's another one out near where I live. I don't see anybody in there hardly at all, and yet, the money has been spent. We have a economic commission where the guy is earning more than our majority leaders in the US Senate and the US Congress. I mean, he is earning almost $100,000 more than they do. A year for what? To bring in a stupid steel plant and using a plan that was made in 2009, debunked in 2011? Please, get with it. Nobody wants a steel plant in their backyard with their kids, with their schools, with their parks, and I don't know why they keep doing this. And they're making these huge tax abatements for big companies coming in. We are a poor community. We cannot afford that. They are coming down here because it is very profitable for them to come and do business here. What I would like to see is us put on the map is a high-tech area. High-tech areas don't need a lot of land, but they do need people. We've got the people. We've got the schools in which to train them. We can do this, but we've got to have the leadership that will put this on. Glad, planning and zoning is another one of my big points. As I said, I've tried to do business. It is an impossible, almost impossible thing, unless you have connections. It just doesn't work. Took me three years to get a plan for an eight-lot subdivision to go in. Three years. I saw Southwest Airlines chased out of here. I saw Bass Pro Shop chased out of here. I saw Costco. They all went other places. We have had a horrible planning and zoning commission, and our rates have been extremely high, sometimes they were just absolutely absurd. So I'm glad we've got some new leadership, but the other thing I wanted to talk about are the taxes. You saw how many entities are taxing us. So many of us are on fixed incomes. We don't get inflation raises. We don't get any of that, and the taxes just keep going up, up, up. I, oh, there, there has to be a way that we can still maintain growth, but not chase out the businesses that want to come with high taxes and high, high investment purposes, but at the same time, we need to take care of what we have here, because so many people have retired here, and so many people want to stay here. And so I'm asking you all to look at that as well. It's so important, in that we get these businesses down here, that we have a city friendly and open to business, without giving them everything. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Linda.
Hello, good evening. My name is Adriana Montemayor Martinez. I'm here protesting any tax increase. I'm a property owner, I've lived in Brownsville for many years, and the property taxes are very, very, very high, very high. It can break our economy. All the people that I talk to complain about the taxes. Salaries are not going up. Sometimes I feel that the city feels we're like a private piggy bank. We're not. We're not. So the city needs to tighten the budget and lower expenses, just like us normal citizens do. Sometimes we're hit with a higher tax rate. Then the appraisal district says your, the value of your house has gone up, and then all the other entities that we saw here, they all want tax rate hikes, and it's non-stop. I strongly urge to consider other options and stop, stop, stop burdening the city, the citizens of Brownsville. All the groups of people that I have complain about the property taxes. Yeah, there comes a, a time where it has to stop, okay? We and our houses have to tighten our budgets. Maybe we can't do everything we want for that year, so the city has to do the same thing. Maybe not everything that you want is possible, this, and this, and this, no, no. You're all homeowners, you all have maybe children. We can't do this, we can't get a vacation this year, because the money's tight. Well, the same, the city has to consider, first of all, the people, okay? The people are the most important, and I think the people need to be relieved of a tax burden. Thank you.
Anyone else that wishes to speak?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is not closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Lupe.
Next, we have the public comment period. At this time, nobody signed up for the public comment period, so we'll go on to items for individual consideration. We have action item number five, consideration, action on resolution number 2019 dash zero-seven-three to appoint members to the Ethics Commission.
So it's my appointment, and I would like to appoint Carlos Navarro to the Ethics Commission.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Next, we have action item number six, consideration, action to adopt leasing options for fleet replacement and authorize master equity lease and maintenance agreements with Enterprise Fleet Management.
Good evening, Commission. Last Tuesday, we had with us Mr. Mike Sosa, who is the representative from Enterprise Fleet. There was no action on this item last week, and unfortunately, his schedule did not allow him to join us this evening. I'm happy to speak to any of the elements of the master lease conceptually that I can, however, I would defer to him for the specifics to speak to his own master lease agreement. I expect that he would be able to join us again on September 17th, and we can place this item back on the agenda at the time if you so desire.
Wait, you asked us to put it on the next agenda?
September 17th is when it is, he could next come to visit us.
Sure, so you want us to table it?
Y'all can take action today.
Oh, sure.
Didn't, didn't we just hear about this?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so we heard about it.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have action item number seven, consideration, action to award a contract for the architectural engineering services for the Brownsville Children's Museum Roofing and existing HVAC systems project in the amount of $61,875 as budgeted.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
I would ask that city staff also look into the other legal issues that we're entangling ourselves with, with these losses.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You adjourn. Thank you.